This meeting to order, it is exactly six P M this evening. We have a full quorum in attendance. Just to note, Secretary Hensley, I will be needing to leave the meeting at six forty-five, and T J Wilkinson will be taking over.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. So to begin, we'll go ahead and start off with an invocation that Mr. Wilkinson would give to us, that'd be wonderful.
Okay, so I've come this morning, this afternoon with humble hearts and bow here. We come thanking you for all that you've done for us. We thank you for this opportunity that you've granted us, Lord. We come with open heart and open mind that you may fill us up with. Lord God has said, we go through this meeting, watch over us, control our thoughts and our minds, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Amen. Pledge of allegiance, we'll start off with the American flag.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America.
Under God.
Now the Texas flag, honor the Texas.
Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas.
Visitors, citizens forum, we did receive an email that I will read. Okay. To Montgomery City Hall and staff from Byron Sanford dated three two twenty twenty-one. As a homeowner, as a homeowner at the hills of Town Creek, I would like us to consider correcting a hazardous situation in our neighborhood. On school day, several cars are parked along the curb at our only entrance. The problem can be reconciled if the curbs on both sides were painted red, as currently only one side is painted red. This is perplexing because there is a fire hydrant directly across from where these cars park, and I cannot see how emergency vehicles could properly maneuver. Of course, the police would need to monitor the area, but at least with the red paint, they would have leverage to issue citations and put a stop to the practice. There have already been several near misses, particularly at the Brock's Emma's Way intersection where people make that right-hand turn. Given that we are about to add another thirty families or so, this problem will only get worse as traffic flow continues to arise. Thank you for all you do to keep our city moving in the right direction, Byron Sanford.
And Mayor, I'll just point out for you and council that I did speak with Mr. Sanford earlier today, and I've forwarded, looking into what the city can do to address that item to, you know, to our development, public works and police staff.
Great, thank you.
And I will follow up with Mr. Sanford when we have some answers for him.
Thank you. I also have requested to speak. At our last meeting, Mr. Armando Nino had brought up a subject regarding Dacus, I'm sorry, some Dobbin, Dacus families that were out of water and after the storm, and I want to give a thank you, thanks to Mike McElroy for reaching out to him right after the meeting or during the meeting, and we were able to actually, or Mike was actually able to find a few of the parts that were needed, and then we got, he was able to get those guys up and running. So I know that we had all were made aware of the issue, I want to make sure that we know that the issue has been resolved, and thanks again to Mike McElroy and the Public Works Department for helping out our neighbors. Public hearings, convene into public hearing. Number one, receive Planning and Zoning Commission report of findings regarding a special use permit application by Cornerstone Community Church requesting an I institutional land use in suites K and L of the Montgomery Trace Shopping Center and a B commercial zoning district.
Yeah, City Council will consider a special use permit for Cornerstone Community Church later this meeting. Prior to considering the special use permit request, council must do two things, and those are the upcoming items here. First, you must receive the Planning and Zoning Commission's report, then you must hold a public hearing for public input. City Council does have the ability to discuss this, but that discussion comes later on the regular agenda item. And so with that, you're clear to receive the report, and the best way to do that is by motion.
Okay, Richard, I move to receive the Planning and Zoning Commission report.
Second.
It is removed and seconded, we received the planning and zoning commission report. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of receiving the planning and zoning report, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will receive the planning and zoning report as presented. All right, number two on your agenda is public hearing regarding a special use permit application by Cornerstone Community Church requesting an I institutional land use in suites K and L of the Montgomery Trace Shopping Center, a B commercial zoning district. This publicly hearing will start, it is six oh six P M. There's no one to speak, so we will go ahead and adjourn this public hearing at six oh six P M. Six oh six P M, we will convene into regular meeting. The consent agenda, number three on your agenda, matters related to the approval of minutes of the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one regular meeting. Number four, consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following resolution. Resolution amending the authorized representatives with text pool. Council, you can take this independently or altogether, what is your pleasure?
I'm okay with together.
I am too.
I am too. I make a motion to accept both items on the consent agenda.
It is removed and seconded that we accept both items on the consent agenda. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion.
Can I ask who seconded? I had a couple at the same time.
Kevin did.
Okay, Tom first, Kevin Lacy second.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda with both items, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented for both items. Consideration of possible action, number five on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Montgomery granting a special use permit for Cornerstone Community Church requesting an I institutional land use in suites K and L of the Montgomery Trace Shopping Center, a B commercial zoning district, establishing certain terms, conditions, and limitations, providing a savings clause and providing an effective date upon passage.
Special use permits are part of Texas zoning law and allow for certain uses within zoning districts where they would not normally be allowed. The special use permits can include appropriate safeguards and conditions that city council would deem necessary, and staff can provide further explanation of special use permits, you know, if you have questions here tonight. The common elements of all special use permits are granted to a specific person, business organization, granted for a specific property or location, granted for a specific use, including specific conditions and requirements. Should any one of these elements change, the special use permit can be revoked by city council, and then attached is a draft, a special use permit that was provided for review. Additional conditions could be added to the ordinance as well. And along the considerations that staff looked at, you know, as this went through the process, a process which ultimately received favorable consideration for planning and zoning, was that this is an area normally zoned for commercial business, allowing a non-commercial business as a church to go in there removes this area from potentially generating sales tax revenue. These units have been unoccupied for a long time, so we're not talking about a conversion from a business that generated sales tax revenue to one that did not, or one that does not here. We're talking about units that have been unused for a significant period of time. And in, yeah, so passage of this item would allow the owners of the property to generate some revenue for that use. Staff also believes that the additional traffic generated by persons going to the church, the church activities, brings additional people to the location that is potentially going to generate additional revenue and tax revenue for the businesses that are in that area that do generate self-tax revenue. So from that point of view, we consider this a potential positive, not a negative. Recommendations provided, you know, council has the options to adopt the ordinance with conditions that council might deem appropriate to add, adopt the ordinance with no additional conditions, or take no action, which means that the ordinance is not adopted. And, you know, and it does have a staff recommendation, recommendation here to adopt the ordinance.
Richard, what businesses that serve alcohol in there, what if one was to leave and somebody wanted to buy the business and serve burgers and beer or something, they're precluded from doing that, is not, is that correct? Isn't it three hundred feet?
They've, they've agreed that, that they will not have any objection to that, you know, and that can be provided as a condition of the special use permit as well.
Okay, Alan, you're okay with that?
As long as it's included in the special use permit, yes.
Yeah, and so that would be something the council would want to add with their approval, right, Alan?
That, that's right, because you're correct, Tom, and the, the general rule is the three hundred feet. But we could require that being waived in the permit.
Okay, because there are two businesses that do serve alcohol, so I want to make sure we protect them.
And I mentioned to Richard earlier today, my only concern with this is that, let's say the church out grows this space and they need more space, and that's not feasible in this shopping center. You know, this has a ten-day caveat of renewal that they have to give notice within ten days, is there a way for us to attach their lease agreement to it, and that the lease agreement determines its tenure, like how long we're going to set it for and how often we renew it, that it follows their lease agreement versus a ten-day window?
My understanding of it is that if they change the actual space that they're occupying, that that would require, and you know, I guess a modification of the special use permit, which in technical terms is a new special use permit.
Okay.
Obviously, Al Boston's been consulted, and they are okay with, well, I guess the parking situation, but of course, the point is that they got a church, they wanted to store to Al Boston have lunch, so happy campers with that, I'm sure, right? Do you have any other questions or concerns about it? Okay, well, I'll make a motion, I'll move to adopt the ordinance with the conditions that Tom mentioned as far as the three hundred feet exemption, is that right, Alan?
Yeah, well, we can, in the, in the document, we understand.
Okay.
What about Julie?
Oh.
Are you here, Julie?
If Dave thinks that it's sufficient on the renewal, then I'm fine. My only concern was that it was going to roll over as industrial use even after they've moved out. So, and the, the building owner would continue to get reduced tax rate if he leased it to someone else if the church moved out. So that was my only concern, is that we lost tax revenue if the church left because of expansion or because of decrease, and they needed to relocate.
Right, to, not to preempt Alan on any comments, but the property, you know, won't receive a tax exemption because the use itself is institutional, the special use permit, you know, doesn't change the underlying zoning, which is commercial, which will stay, you know, it's, it's all taxed at the same rate. In terms of, you know, expanding space, again, if they move beyond suites K and L, they would need to amend the special use permit, which in effect is a new special use permit. If, if, say, they, they grew to the point where they needed to add space adjacent to that, they would need a new special use permit. And I think if I'm understanding to Tom's point, you know, the condition is, you know, that they waive any, any objection to any new or, you know, renewing alcohol permits of any kind from T A B C.
That's correct.
So mostly it's to adopt the ordinance with the condition of the pure foot alcohol, how should I word that? How should you word this?
Alcohol clause, or waiver?
Waiver, there you go.
I second that.
I'm sorry, what was the word you chose, Kevin?
I hear waiver.
Waiver. It is removed and seconded that we accept this clause as presented, in addition to the three hundred-foot alcohol waiver. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting this ordinance as presented, along with adding the three hundred-foot alcohol waiver, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the ordinance as presented, along with the three hundred-foot alcohol waiver. Item number six on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following ordinance. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Montgomery, Texas, amending its municipal budget for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, budget amendment number three, providing a repealing clause and a Texas Open Meetings Act clause, and providing an immediate effective date.
Some of you may remember, at the time of last year's audit, there were a couple minor budget, or a couple minor notes in the audit related to budget items. Yeah, and so it was discussed at that point that, you know, during the audit process, those notes could be avoided if the budget was amended prior to the time of the audit, and council requested that we come back that way in the, you know, with the next audit, and we're at that point now. As we're wrapping up the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty audit, and after a discussion with the city's auditor, it was found that three of the budget accounts needed an amendment for finalization. These changes, you know, are attached to this budget or this agenda report, you know, and they will properly allow these accounts to be completed in the audit without a management letter note provided by the auditor for these items. These amendments were prepared in discussion with the auditor, and I have, you know, you know, Anthony Lasky, you know, are from our accounting office here on the line to explain these items to council, so Anthony.
Okay, thank you. These are just items that I discussed with the auditor to, just to make sure that everything on their side was, was to avoid, you know, just what Richard said, any language, any language on that section. So there were only three accounts that it affected, or that we needed to, that we needed to modify, so then that way, their, their side would, would be good with our side, and so it's just, it's, so it's just one thing, just to close out the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit, we would need to make those three changes, and then we should be good.
I make a motion that we accept these changes as written.
Second.
It is removed and seconded that we accept these changes as written. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote, it is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the ordinance as presented and make the changes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the ordinance as presented, the changes. Item number seven on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding annual review of, review of grounds maintenance and right-of-way mowing and lift station weed control contracts with Cody's Lawn Services LLC regarding level of service and service cost.
These contracts were signed March thirteenth, twenty twenty, between the city and Cody's Lawn Service. Item thirteen within the contract states that city council shall review and authorize renewal annually regarding cost and level of service for this three-year contract. A meeting was held with Mr. Cody Scavanna to discuss any additional needs such as new streets or facilities. It was concluded that there is not a need to increase the level of service at this point. They are asking for a basic inflation and fuel surcharge increase of three percent to cover the cost of rising fuel. The full price of both contracts combined for the year is one hundred nine thousand one hundred forty dollars, which would add a maximum increase of three thousand two hundred seventy-four dollars twenty cents. Services for grounds maintenance were performed thirty-three or thirty-six times this year, and lift station weed control was performed six out of a possible twelve times. For, so for the total of the contracts, actually worked out to be three thousand nine hundred dollars less than the amount was budgeted. You know, Cody has been given the directive to use his discretion on whether it is appropriate to spray for weeds, and he does not perform that task if it is not needed. The city finds that his services have been exceptional to this point, and he has a good level of communication with city staff here. I also have Mike McElroy on the line here, City's Public Works Director. Mike, did you have any additional comments to add regarding the services that have been provided by Cody and his firm?
Not really, Richard, I'll just echo what you say, the communication's great, he does a great job, he's by far been the best contractor that we've had since I've been here, so I'm completely on board with giving him the three percent.
So the staff recommendation is to award the renewal of both contracts with the three percent fuel surcharge increase for each in accordance with the contract for the services provided.
What, what's the normal term? Is it annual, or is it like three-year review to annually?
This is a three-year, these are three-year contracts with an annual review.
Okay.
And so they do need to be reviewed by council to be considered.
I have to say, I've never had more compliments on our lawn services than before. Usually I hear all the bad, but I've actually heard some good compliments, so good job, Cody, and your team.
Thank you.
Hey, well, I move to award the yearly renewal of both contracts with a three percent fuel surcharge for each in accordance with the contract for the services provided.
And I'll second.
It is removed and seconded that we award the yearly renewal of both contracts with a three percent fuel surcharge for each in accordance with the contract of the services provided. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote, it is now open for discussion. All those in favor of awarding a yearly renewal of both contracts with a three percent fuel surcharge for each in accordance with the contract for the services provided, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will award, we will accept and award the yearly renewal of both contracts with a three percent fuel surcharge for each in accordance with the contract of the services provided. Number eight on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding approval of the final plat for the Hills of Town Creek, section four.
And we have the city engineer on the, on this meeting call for this item with his written recommendation attached.
Good evening, everyone. In your packet, you have a copy of a memo from us, as well as a copy of the final plat, this is for Hills of Town Creek, section four, over on the, obviously in the Hills of Town Creek, Emma's Way section that we talked about earlier. Lost my advanced, but there it is, all right, sorry. So this did go to Planning and Zoning Commission last week, and was presented to them, they didn't offer any objection to it and recommended approval. The one thing to note on this is with it being a final plat, they are required to put up a maintenance bond with the city, or excuse me, a performance bond with the city, and what the ordinance requires is that it is for a hundred percent of the remaining construction costs of the contract, so out there, what's left is really paving a little bit, and then some site work. So the estimated cost at the time was around a hundred thousand dollars to complete that work. The actual bond that they provided was for the full contract amount, so we're fully, we're added as additional obligee to the bond for that, so we're, we're more than covered on the amount of the bond. And the purpose of that is, if the city, you know, agrees and plats and subdivides the property, that gives the ability to sell off those individual pieces, and if, in the meantime, the developer defaults and disappears, the city would then have the ability to call that bond and finish out the project, so those lots could still be delivered after it's subdivided, is the purpose. So nothing out of ordinary on this plat. One thing that we discussed with council during the plans, and also during the preliminary plat stage, was the green space off of the park, and so that is shown on here, and then one last-minute change that they had, which doesn't affect, you know, really anything, is they added a utility easement on, on one lot for Mid-South or Electric, and so again, that was, you know, one small adjustment that was made. And then just for your, it's, sorry, I didn't make it in here, we're kind of an update on where they stand, so before, one of your conditions of plan approval were, were two things, one was to see and approve a park plan by staff, so that we know that it's not just a, you know, a blank field for this park, and then also for there to be a maintenance agreement for the HOA and the property owner of that detention pond, to make sure it's upkept and it stays in amenity. Both of those are in the works, we've seen, like, on drafts agreements and also drafted the plans, that it was not a condition for the plat, that's a condition for your final acceptance of the plans and of the infrastructure, which will come in probably the next month, month and a half to you. So our recommendation is to go ahead and approve the final plat and get started with signatures, and I'm here if you have any questions.
I'll make a motion that we accept this final plat for phase four of Hills of Town Creek as it's presented.
With second.
Moved and seconded that we accept this final plat for phase four of Hills of Town Creek, this motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it is open for discussion.
If I can add, and Alan might be able to answer it, but one comment that I did have is just making sure that the form of the, the bond, your attorney's okay with, so I don't know if Alan has a chance to, we got it late last week, so he might be able to answer now, or just make a contingent upon.
Yeah, I, I, I looked at it, and it, it's good.
There you go.
And just clarification, that is, accept and approve the final plat, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Was that seconded, I'm sorry?
It was by T J Wilkinson.
All those in favor of accepting and approving the final plat for Hills of Town Creek, section four, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we'll accept and approve the final plat for Hills of Town Creek, section four. Next, I have a business on your agenda, number nine, consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following resolution. A resolution of the city of Montgomery requesting street construction, repair, and maintenance by Montgomery, Texas.
Okay, our existing interlocal agreement that the city has with Montgomery County requires the city to adopt a resolution when we're requesting street repair work, that street repair work is done by precinct one personnel. College Street and Caroline Street repairs were previously identified for repair and approved by city council with, with an estimate from precinct one on the former commissioner, Mike Metter, but that approval was put on hold due to the COVID nineteen budget reductions last year. So we want to revisit this item, and we want to get council's approval to go ahead and approach the county through precinct one to get this work done. The, the budget estimate around that, around the time was around sixty thousand dollars to repay ball streets from one forty-nine to the western ends, and we have approximately eighty thousand dollars left in the contract labor streets budget item, that would be sufficient to cover those, so we would like to request council adopt the resolution that's presented towards these road repairs, so we can approach Montgomery County precinct one to get the work done.
Richard, do you foresee any additional costs that they could throw at us, since it's been a year since they estimated it, or no, not really?
Of course, the, of course, that's always possible, you know, but we, we have about a thirty-three percent buffer above those costs that's still within the budget item, and unfortunately, with regards to road issues like that, while those could go up, delaying them ultimately in the long run, those costs would only go, would only go significantly higher, the streets are. The streets are in pretty similar condition now that they were a year ago. And so we, we don't see significant change. Mike Muckleroy, I think he's dropped off this call, but he did review those roads and so he believes that estimates in the ballpark of good at this time.
I'm still here with you, Richard.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't see you there. Well, do you have anything to add, Mike, before I continue to put words in your mouth?
No, sir, I sure don't. Other than just remember that this is the process that is needed to get the ball rolling. We're not committed to having to do the entire road from start to finish. If the, if the estimates were to come in higher, we can always back off what we decide to do later. But this is the process that's needed to get started.
And also for the benefit of council, that's sometimes why we don't also come with the, a significantly large list because, you know, there may be other work to do to follow up, but we try not to spend it all at one time. We still have, we still have a, a good few amount of months left in the year. We're not quite to the halfway point. But these were the primary projects we have left over. And so that's why we'd like to attack these first.
Well, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
It has been noted and seconded that we adopt the resolution as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the resolution as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the resolution as presented. Next item on business on your agenda is the executive session. I do not see anything in executive session, so we will move right along to council inquiry. Is there, number 10, discussion regarding lowering the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation expenditure limit that requires city council approval from $10,000 to $5,000 as requested by council member Kevin Lacy. Can I ask?
Okay, sorry. Yeah, we're, myself and two of the citizens were discussing this about a week ago in regard to the, the level at which our method gets approval. So we sort of identify and talk to Alan to see, is that something that council wished to lower to maybe the $5,000 mark that we could do? Or is there a regular way that we can't, where's the law say in regard to the way we're set up on?
So, so the statute requires council approval for items over $10,000. And it is silent under $10,000. It doesn't really say that the council has any authority to say no to items less than $10,000. So, so I, I don't think that you could really require it in the sense of making a prohibiting straight out and expenditure less than $10,000 without council approval. But there's always a but and there's always another way to skin a cat. Council does have, you know, ultimate authority over the EDC through the appointment process. And with, in that, that section that talks about appointments, you know, it, it gives council the right to remove or replace a board member at any time for, with or without cause. So, so you pretty much have full discretion to replace board members if you so desire. So, so you can adopt policies of sorts that would require, you know, some type of limitation. The teeth in them might not be, or would not be, that the expenditure would be fled out disallowed. But, you know, if, if the EDC chose not to follow whatever policy or guidelines the council adopts, your, your stick is to replace and, to remove and replace the EDC members. So, so you always have that hammer, if you will, to act as some sort of deterrent to enforce that policy.
Even though funds might have been spent that we might or may or may not have disagreed with. So basically, we're punishing, well, not necessarily punishing, but rectifying the situation after it took place.
Yeah, it's sort of an after the fact kind of, okay, situation, yes.
Okay, unfortunately, there's any citizens on that, to Tom's point, that agree or disagree with anything that the EDC might be working on, you know, whether that be a goat costume or a function downtown, you know, that's definitely an obligation for citizens to attend the EDC meetings and voice their, their opinion in that case, right? So.
Sure, yeah.
And Richard, what, I'm, I'm sorry, Alan, what is the process? You said with or without cause, it's just an agenda item put on the next agenda?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
So Alan, what is the process? If, you know, if council wants to go through this process, you know, from my point of view here as a city administrator, is this something we put on the next agenda for, you know, getting council to, you know, to put their input together so we can craft the right policy for them to consider? Or how is that done? Because this is something I'm, yeah, I'm not familiar with, having seen this done before. So I need your guidance on that.
I would, I would say yes, that, that if you're going to go down that path, you probably want to develop some sort of guidelines or policies or some, something that you can give the, the EDC board members that here's the limits we want you to live within. And you would adopt that in the form of a resolution. But to craft that, I think you're exactly right, Richard. We'd probably want council to, to give us some feedback so that we can put together something that, you know, the majority of council is desiring, yeah.
Well, the bottom line is, at the end of the day, I think that it just goes back to the fact that, you know, if there are some things we agree or disagree on that the EDC may not be working on, you know, as citizens, see the same old meaning and make the appointment known there.
That's, no, we need $10,000 goat costume. I know that there's something to be voted on, but I don't think that it comes near to that cost and it hasn't even been spent. So are we trying to put a quagmire on something that hasn't even been approved?
I'm not aware of this point, but that's a.
I'm just, I'm just curious of where, where we're going here. Most companies give authorities for, for folks or on boards a threshold to spend. So we don't get bogged down on anything over a low-end amount, right? So that the business can continue and be consistent and, and happen and not gets nitpicked and stair-stepped on everything.
Yeah. Thank you, I'll answer my question now, thank you so much.
Sure.
Is there anything else on council? I didn't see anything else on council inquiry. Kevin, it was your inquiry, are you good or did you want to continue? All right, all right, good. All right, well then, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
It has been moved and seconded into adjourn the meeting. This, I need, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and this meeting is officially adjourned at 6:39 PM. Thanks, everyone, have a great week.
Bye-bye.